A few years ago, some of you have visited my office and you know there's a painting on the wall of my office. And it's entitled "Discovery of New Worlds." And it's composed of two panels. The first panel has a small ship emerging from the fog and what looked like stormy seas. And the second is just plain green. And some people ask me how I managed to purchase a painting, half of which I could have painted myself. You know which half they mean, the green one. And my answer is that the painting is for me a metaphor, representing the future of the possibilities of higher education. The green panel is the space in which we can invent our dreams. It's for students what they are going to make of themselves because higher education is not something that is done to you. It's something that you do yourself with the guidance of your faculty. But it's also for the university what we make of our university. Looking at the troubled state of the world's economy today, the metaphor could be extended. The ship might be construed to represent the universities and the green mat, the future made hopeful by our capable graduates and our brilliant faculty and staff. Every year as we award our diplomas, we remind our graduates that the degree they have earned carries with it certain rights, privileges, and responsibilities. Those responsibilities include using our knowledge in an ethical fashion. They include returning through civic engagement, the gift of an education that our fellow citizens have made possible. For all taxpayers help fund our institutions. They also include the responsibility to use our learning wisely, to contribute to solving some of the world's problems, whether they be through new ideas for sustainable development, improved life and living conditions, meaningful employment, or the resolution of the mysteries and the meaning of life and the universe, including macro and micro and nano systems yet to be understood and measured. It is an education that the hope for a better future lies. As scholars, researchers, and teachers, it is our responsibility to realize those possibilities. It's also the government's responsibility to fund our institutions, especially Carleton. That sounds a little self-interested, doesn't it? But that's appropriate, right? The very best course of action for governments today is to invest in education. Certainly, there are many requests competing for the limited funds available. There is however, no other request that holds such promise. Ontario has built a fine system of universities, which offers access to students in every region of the province. These universities and colleges are differentiated, offering a variety of programs and approaches to education. Some students will flourish in a megaversity in a big city. Others will blossom in a small environment. Every institution vies for excellence. If the government were to target only some institutions for further investment, there would be no incentive to compete for the best faculty and students. Access must mean access to excellence, not to a second rank of schools. Lately, this argument has become one where those same institutions would be centers for all science education. If we want to increase the number of students in science and mathematics and engineering, limiting access to those programs to only certain universities will certainly not support that growth. Graduate students and funding for them are an essential part of research and teaching. Funding for research in turn supports graduate students. Both contribute to the model university with a balance among disciplines, graduate and undergraduate students, teaching and research. They also contribute to our regional economy and our corner zones of Ontario's future. Our young minds are largely an untapped resource that will be sustainable only if we support education at all levels. We must all work together and with other institutions to encourage governments at all levels to continue and increase their support for higher education. Under the current system, all universities have the opportunity to compete for the best and brightest researchers, scholars, and students. This competition can help foster innovation and discovery. We need more, not less, competition. This is an era when collaboration and cooperation among scholars across disciplines and among institutions will also contribute to Canada's ability to compete internationally while using resources efficiently. At Carleton, we are well situated to lead an interdisciplinary research and teaching, not only in the areas highlighted in the strategic plan, but in our currently and newly defined fields as well. And I'd like to pause for a moment here to reassure those individuals who have not yet identified a place for themselves in the strategic plan, that there is indeed a space and a place for everyone. We must all teach and do research. We are all part of Carleton and Carleton's future. I would like to reassure you that real-world problems does not mean that philosophy is excluded or that we're dealing only with applied science. The meaning of life is a real-world problem. I think that discovering an interpretation of Shakespeare, Dante, Cervantes, or Plato would add meaning to our existence and are as real as our studies of particle physics and cellphone technology. I invite you to think boldly of new initiatives and areas for interdisciplinary teaching and research. Plans are meant to evolve and I challenge you to contribute to this process. That doesn't mean you have to give up complaining. That's still allowed. This year, we hosted the Congress of the Humanities and Social Sciences. And as I pointed out, at that time in an opinion piece in The Citizen, "Research in the Humanities" delves into the narratives of our path and the myths of our very existence. This exploration helps not only understand the meaning of our lives, but helps us create new understanding and knowledge. Research and teaching will be done more and more by teams using new approaches. For example, I imagine a degree program in nanoscience. John, you have to sit up and listen. Offered jointly by a number of institutions, each offering courses online. I imagine courses taught by groups of scholars, each responsible for one chapter, each working to make that week the best week in the student's semester and together gaining additional time for research while students benefit from the best of the best. I see research teams linked across universities sharing pieces of the puzzle and fresh insights. I also see creating lectures and entire courses online, not solely to be used at a distance, but on campus by choice for convenience or because the method and results are simply brilliant. But let me also reassure you that individual efforts are and will always be valued and be important and technology will never replace the teacher. Surely, we must continue investing in our granting councils and allow them to reward the best of the best wherever they are located. Many of them are right here at Carleton and in this room. Incentives to create a team approach to teaching and research should be made available through additional resources to the councils and via them to the universities willing to compete. No one or five schools has the patent for excellence. I'm proud of the achievements of Carleton faculty and students and staff in the past year. For example, we've seen a Rhodes Scholar at the Oreal Women in Science event at the French Embassy a few weeks ago. I learned that a 2009 Carleton M.A.C. grad, now doing her PhD in Toronto, Ms. Ling, was one of three winners. I visited David Esriely in Montreal and had the privilege of sharing with him the absolutely brilliant project the architecture students and faculty submitted for the BNL in Vienna. Professor Santoro just won the Prize for Innovation in Distributed Computing. You could try and distributed commuting too. We celebrated Professor Cross winning the Charles Taylor Prize for Nonfiction and the nomination of two Carleton professors as finalists in the Star Professor Competition. The work of our students and professors in physics on the particle detector at the Large Hadron Collider is absolutely smashing. Our own star professor. I know, it's really bad if you have to laugh at that. The work of our students and professors, such as Tony Beletti along with Coral C., received over $9 million in a provincial grant, $11.7 million from IBM, plus nearly $3 million from other companies. We celebrated newly elected members of the Royal Society. This year, Charlotte Gray. Last year, Fraser Taylor. The year before, Ruth and Mark Phillips. There are very few schools that have a consistent success record. This is very, something we should be very proud of. Professor David Faulkner received an honorary Doctorate of Science from the University of Edinburgh. Professor Sarah Bannerman won a Fulbright to do research in the U.S. Ted Jackson just won the Ontario Citizenship Medal. And two economists, Yanlin Wang and Jiki Shen, were elected as President and Vice President of the Chinese Economist Society. We have two new Canada research chairs, Winnie Yee and Stephen Cook. Matthew Bisson and Patrick Lalonde, two engineering students, were chosen among 563 applicants to participate in the Extreme Blue program. MA student Howard Adler won the Canadian Aboriginal Writing Challenge with his story Johnny Seven Fires. The students working at Badua have made us really proud at how they're bringing life back to a community that needed reorganization and invigoration. Our alumni have also been successful. For example, Gary O'Brien, a PhD in Political Science, was named Clerk of Senate. And Jane McVeigh was named Businesswoman of the Year from the Ontario Business Network Association. Our staff have been really busy. The library staff won the Barbara Wells Award for having the most active and successful campaign for the United Way. And I thank you all for being great donors to the United Way program. The first-year convocation, the graduation ceremonies, the congress that were held here, all went off without a hitch. They all required enormous effort by faculty and staff. I thank them, all the staff, for being so professional and for doing such a great job. You really made Carleton look as good as we really are. The summer orientation teams. Jeremy, you're here, thank you. The enrollment, which has grown. Suzanne and your staff, thank you very much. You've made it possible for this to happen. Also, the faculty have, by making it possible for students to enroll in classes. I'm also proud of our achievements as a Carleton team. We developed a strategic plan. We have a new provost who has already completed a restructuring report. The vice president of research has been selected and is already busy at work. The directors of communication and advancement have been working for almost six months already. Communications and fundraising strategies have been undertaken to help rebuild the university's reputation, to tell the Carleton story to the world and generate the resources that we need for the future. We've seen government funding for two buildings. The safety changes under Duncan's leadership, thank you Duncan. The Joe Ho gift for the College of the Humanities. The Bill Barton gift for the Chair and Democracy. We started the brilliant program in Badua and we noted a marked increase in student satisfaction and in retention as well as the numbers of students attending. And eventually, the McLanes will catch up and report that. I'd like to thank all faculty and staff for accommodating all of this so smoothly. The traditions that we've started together bode well for the future. The agenda for this year includes working with everyone here to achieve the goals of the strategic plan, to raise the funds needed to do this, and to continue improving retention and our reputation. We need everyone's assistance and hard work. We'll be working on the quiet phase of the financial campaign. Now, the quiet phase doesn't mean that we're going to all get laryngitis. It really means that we are going to go out and try and raise half the money that we need in the campaign before we capture newspaper headlines. We need to continue the good work on communications. We will build on the success of the faculty, staff, students, and alumni. We need you to continue work on retention, to help with program development and to support each other as we balance the demands and challenges of teaching and research, community engagement, and the profound thinking which will indeed help us solve the mysteries of the universe. Let us be creative and competitive. Let's work with our neighbors, Ottawa University and Algonquin. Vice President Academic and I just met with the vice presidents and presidents of those institutions to see how we could further our work together in the course of this year. Let's find ways to bring the world to Carleton and make the world sit up and take notice of the many good things happening here. We know that governments are increasingly looking for universities to demonstrate the return on investment. Whether it's research results, more world-class thinking, improved student experience, it will be critical that at Carleton, we demonstrate that we are a leader on all these fronts. I'm very pleased that the academic restructuring has complete. We have now looked at the structures in place and determined that there will be no major shifts. This means, of course, that there are no major innovations or savings, but this was not our first goal. Our first goal was to get it right and be sure that our structures will be capable of serving us in the future as Carleton continues to respond to the development of new knowledge, new fields of inquiry, new societal needs, and technological advances. We wanted to offer everyone the opportunity to look at what we were doing and to assess its effectiveness before we moved on to the future. Now we can look at curricular innovations within the faculties and see how they will fit within the structures that we currently have. We have to make Carleton the first choice for scholars and by that I mean both students and teachers. If we look at the past and see why have people chosen Carleton, they've chosen it because of the wonderful programs that we offer. Programs are offered because of wonderful faculty and the students who choose them. But we need to think of the programs that we're offering and figure out which programs will lead us to success in the future. Some people might say that there are 90,000 more students in the system and all we have to do is put out a sieve and pick out the very best ones and they'll just come to Carleton and life will be easy. There's been a more recent report which says that that number is wrong and the number is almost a negative number for Ontario. That means that if that were true, we'd have to work extra hard to continue getting our share of the students in the province. So whichever figure is right, we will not be wrong if we work really hard to offer to students things that will really make them say, "That is the university that I want to attend." As we look to next year, we expect that the financial situation will not be any better. There is no prospect of an increase in the provincial grant. Minister has been very, several ministers have been very clear about that. And there's an increase in our annual pension payment of $15 million. So, in order to avoid making cuts, we have to be more innovative and seeing how we address these pressures. A task force is looking at ways to generate revenues and to save costs. But we need your input. And I ask each one of you to think about how we might work together to solve these problems. It is a rare opportunity that we have to be creative and proactive in facing budgetary constraints. And none of you should think that you are just too small, a cog in the great wheel, to come up with a great idea. Anyone can, from his or her point of observation, see something that we could do more efficiently, better, and we would like to know that. So please come out and say what you think. I always say that an institution with enough money just doesn't have enough ideas. That is certainly not Carleton's problem. It's the ideas which will drive the dollars. Even in hard times, especially in hard times, innovation and hard work are worthwhile. And even in hard times, some institutions succeed. And this will be the university that does succeed. We have the foundation, thanks to Duncan's prudent fiscal management and thanks to all of your hard work. We have the foundation where other universities are cutting now. We have the possibility of looking to the future and picking out what it is that we're going to do that will be so exciting that we will be double winners. We all love the Horatio Alger success story. The story of the young person who, just through hard work, gets everything that he or she needs. It's sort of like the story of that horse Seabiscuit. The story can be Carleton's story. We need to redouble our commitment to excellence, teaching, research, community service, and economic development. Let us lead by example and, to borrow Tony Beletti's phrase, "lead to win." The recent publication, Unscientific America by Chris Mooney and Sheryl Kirshenbaum, points out the need for Renaissance scholars who embrace the humanities, the social sciences, and sciences. They identify society's need for the public intellectual. They decry those who attack either science or the humanities, stating that the way forward is to educate scientists who understand communications and humanists who understand science. I would like to point out as well that when one institution or one university attacks another or one discipline attacks another discipline, we do disservice to our profession and to those we serve. We need to stand together to respect and value each other's work. We need to explain to the public the importance of such work and to do so, we need to be both inspiring and inspired, engaging and engaged. We need to write our own scripts and boldly seek new ways to teach, reaching out to the world around us, and find new ways to demonstrate that our research, however esoteric it might appear to some, has indeed real meaning and importance in our world. Hubert Reeves, in his book, L'Univers, he was a Nobel Prize winner in physics and his book was called L'Univers a-t-il un sens? Does the Universe Have a Meaning? The subtitle of it was L'Art de S'enivrer, The Art of Getting Drunk, but we won't bother with the subtitle. He says, "L'Univers a-t-il un sens?" Yes, the universe does have a meaning. And the meaning is found in passion. And as this semester draws to a close, let's dedicate and rededicate ourselves to the pursuit of knowledge and wisdom, to the discovery of new ideas. Let us remember that our meaning is based in our students, both graduate and undergraduate, who come from every corner of this nation and from many countries around the world. Let us take inspiration from their desire for knowledge and let's do so with joy and passion. For thereby, we will each succeed individually and together as an academic community in our work. This success will in turn inspire the world outside to invest in the sheer and overwhelming beauty of your work in every field. Thank you. You all get the applause. And now I get the questions, right? But I actually twisted the arms of all the vice presidents who agreed to come and help me answer any questions that you might have that you would like to have answered. And so, I can see somebody quick leaving the room because they don't want to ask a question. There goes the first question. And here's the second question. And there's a microphone right over there, so it might help. Oh, you were just asking for somebody else?
No, no, someone else also raised their hand.
Oh, did somebody else raise a hand? Okay, it's very, very hard to be the first person to ask a question. It's okay, if you don't want to ask the first question, we will consider that the first question was done and now we're on to the second question.
No, I don't want it to be done. I want it to be answered. Thank you.
Okay.
My name is Nahla Abdul. Thank you for this talk. It was enlightening. I particularly enjoyed several things actually from what you were saying. Particularly, one of your emphasis on the question of ethics, that we need to use our knowledge in an ethical manner. One of the last points you made is that ideas can drive the dollar. You're absolutely right. But also dollars can drive ideas that might not necessarily be ethical or we would support. Within this context, I was looking at our pension plan, faculty pension plan, and I could not find an ethical investment policy there. My question is, if faculty find that our fund or our plan is being invested in arms, in weapons manufacturer, and in similar immoral companies, would Carleton support the issuing of ethical investment policy? This is my question.
The pension plan is run right now, I understand, by a committee that is composed of faculty representatives and staff representatives, all the members of the pension fund. So, we don't direct that committee. That committee makes its own decisions. And so, I will be sure that that question is sent to the pension committee. And I know that Ms. Springer, who is the staff member who works with the pension fund, is doing open sessions across the campus in the coming weeks to talk to us all about what is happening with the investments. So that would be a good place to ask that question as well, okay? Well, I can't believe that was the only question. I did try to be very, very complete in this, but I didn't expect that not a single soul would have a question. Oh, I see a question in the back.
I just wanted, you had mentioned when you were speaking about the, about working together with other universities. Do you have any ideas of how to better, as a community, take advantage of the joint institutes we have going with University of Ottawa?
I don't have myself a personal idea about those joint institutes, but I can tell you that we just had a meeting with the presidents and vice presidents of Algonquin, Ottawa, and Carleton. And what we thought we would do to improve the way we work together is to look at, number one, there is a new requirement coming down from the government on how we serve people with disabilities. And we were going to look to see how we could work together to fill that guideline because it could be a very expensive proposition for us all and yet we really want to serve people with disabilities. And we broadened that question by saying, alright, there are now virtual libraries, digital libraries. How can we use that context in this AODA situation? And is there a way that the three institutions could become a model? The second thing that we thought of doing together was working together to better serve the Aboriginal community that we all three serve. The third thing that we thought of was working on seamless transfer. And we were going to start in the areas of mathematics and move then later into other areas where we could look at course by course, what are the equivalencies? And we could also work together because mathematics is the subject that is the most frequently failed. And mathematics 100 is the most frequently failed subject in all of North America by students going to all colleges and universities. We all say that people don't go into science and mathematics, engineering. And sometimes it's because they don't have that math course and sometimes because they lost it in their first year. So how do we work together to create a math course? And maybe work also with the high schools so that when students get to the university, that they are really qualified to move into science and technology and mathematics and engineering. Also, met with a few corporations to talk about this. And IBM Extreme Blue, their competition this year is looking at the possibility of working with Carleton as a model school for how we get young people to go into sciences and mathematics. And how it is that young people decide to go to university and first-generation students, children of immigrants. Are there high schools that don't offer science and math and then students don't go into those fields? What are the factors that influence what's going to happen to young people in the future? If we do that, we'll solve the problem for the University of Alberta too.
You received the restructuring committee's report. I just wondered if you had any comments on it or if you're going to give a formal response to it. If so, what are your timeline and dates for telling us what happened?
Okay, the restructuring committee report was out just about a week ago. It's now on the web so that you can all get it. Some of the report requires funding and that would have to be considered in the next year's budget. Some of the report is things, are things that your different colleges could undertake and should undertake. Some of them, some of the things are Some of them, some of the things are structural changes within colleges, such as neuroscience, I believe was mentioned. But there also was a question of support to research, and that one thing we've actually done already, because we, you will have noted that this, this week, I think, there's an advertisement for an associate vice president research up on the web, and that is intended to better support our research activities on this campus. So we are, we have not set a timeline. I haven't set out a date for what we're going to do for each of those things. I read the report, and I said, golly, we're doing some things, and the rest will have to work together.
Okay, so if I just, in terms of, you know, in terms of the recommendations, the faculties, the studies of their structure, do you, are, sorry. Do you support the recommendations in the report? Are you encouraging those faculties to follow those? Because the report is to you, so I'm just wondering, do you want us to do that, or do you not?
The recommendation says, would the faculties consider what they could do together? So I really think the faculty should make that consideration of what they can do. It's not the president's, you know, actually, it's not the president's job to tell you what you should do. And if I did try and tell you what you should do, you'd tell me to go home. So that would not be a very good thing. So I think that recommendation is in the hands of the faculty themselves and the deans, and that's why this restructuring committee was made a committee. If it were not consultative, if we had not wanted to invite everybody and make this something that we do together, we wouldn't have set up the committee to start with. So this is going to be an ongoing consultative process. And so if one of the faculties says, gee, we could do this better, and they really want to do it, well, then I think that's great. And if they think that they're doing everything perfectly, well, that's great, too. Does that reassure you a little bit? Okay.
Thank you. We, as the managing director of one of the research centers here at Carlton University, I was very, very pleased to see your rebuttal in The Citizen to this notion that only the largest five universities were qualified to undertake significant research, particularly with our granting councils. And I wanted to ask you whether, whether you saw this as requiring an ongoing campaign? Was this a once-only trial balloon? Are you receiving any comment from the granting councils about this, these proposals?
Okay. I have lived long enough that I note that every time there's going to be a new budget or a new budget framework, there is positioning, okay? And that positioning can be, my institution deserves all the money, for whatever reason. You know, better, bigger, we're located in the north, we serve an urban population, whatever reason, each institution tries to position itself. I have in the past heard that argument that research should be in certain institutions, and everyone else would not do it. So it's not the first time I've heard that argument. It's the first time that I saw it publicly stated in such a blatant fashion. And it seemed to me that it was so obviously wrong that it really didn't need response. But then, I thought to myself, well, if nobody responds, then this might be taken as something that we all agree to, and then when they're doing the budget, they say, okay, this is what we're going to do. So I actually called a couple presidents up and said, would you like to co-sign a letter with me? And they said to me, well, why don't you just go ahead with that, dear? So I said, fine, I will do that. And within weeks, almost every president in the province had written a similar letter, and we got supportive editorials in The Star, in The Citizen, The Globe, everywhere. So I think that that particular issue is dead. The Council of Ontario Presidents have met, and people have backtracked a lot. However, if you read what I said, I think it's still a little bit alive, because I heard at least one of those institutions that's located in Ontario, the only one being there, say, well, you know what we'll do is we'll take all the science students, and we'll let the other institutions in the province be the arts students. And that struck me as, well, is that another way of trying to get what they're doing? And so, you know, I immediately raised my hand and said, well, wait a minute. You know, you don't have to be born in Toronto to do science, and you don't have to live in Toronto to do science. And, you know, the first Nobel Prize in all of Ontario that was won by somebody in science came at Carlton, actually, the second one. So there. I think we have, the science can be done anywhere. The third argument that then I see them slipping the terrain is that they should do all the graduate students. And University of Toronto has actually now said that they would like to have more graduate students, and they're going to have less undergraduate students on their St. George campus. I think that's a mistake. It is really important to have a good number of graduate students, but it's also important to have a good number of really good undergraduate students. There has to be a balance to create an exciting university that works as an academic community. If you just have graduate students and there aren't very many undergraduate students, you don't have any TAs. You don't have anybody creating that life and excitement that moves the graduate students on. And also, it's a question of funding. We all know that there is some, some levels of education cost more than others, some departments cost more than others. We do it as a balance, and the balance makes the whole thing work. So if we, if there is an institution that's only graduate, it's going to be an expensive institution. Okay?
Hello there. So I want to start off by saying that I'm a student here at Carlton, and I believe that when there was a town hall last year, it was an open forum. I'm actually really, I love my university, and part of my critical student experience that we talk about, to enrich it, is things like this. So I want to ask why students weren't invited. And my second question is, you talked about the agenda items and the strategic plan. Is accountability and transparency on the agenda? Because several faculty and students have been concerned about a student who put in a FIPA request, Freedom of Information request, and was actually asked a full year's tuition's worth for the FIPA request. Numerous faculty have sent on to a letter, and it's been a really, you know, an issue. So I was wondering what you wanted to say about that. Thank you.
The university did not say that we wanted transparency in our strategic plan, but we believe that we are transparent, and we believe that we are accountable. This forum is being currently streamed everywhere on campus. Students are welcome to attend, just as anyone else is welcome to attend. So you are here. Obviously, your presence here is a proof that students are welcome. Yes, last year, there was a FIPA request that came by a student who asked that the fee be waived. The Ontario rules say that if FIPA request is to be waived, an individual must submit their financial statements and prove that there's hardship. My understanding is that the student was asked to submit that and did not follow up. There are many students who ask for things under FIPA. All students could ask for a reduction of fees. There has to be, it has to follow the rules that are set up by the Ontario government. Okay? Yes?
Good morning. You talked about your vision up early, and you talked about teaching, and I was wondering if you could expand on sort of, not new thinking, but your, how we rethink teaching. You talked about more online courses. You talked about more collaborative teaching, and I was wondering what you had in mind there.
Okay, well, this is, this is for you to, to, you know, sort of throwing you the bone to see if you pick it up and want to run with it. But Carlton has always been known for moving forward and being innovative in teaching. There was CUTV when no other school had it. The next generation is computer streaming, and we are now getting into that, and that, I would like to see how that works and how many people want to do it. You were all heroes during the transit strike last year, because there were so many classes that were streamed and put on by television that I, you know, I mostly get complaints. I hardly ever get people to take the trouble to write and say, you know, you were wonderful, Carlton. I got lots of letters from people saying that thanks to Carlton University putting on the courses on television, on streaming, that they were able to continue their education despite the strike. So we've got a tradition of doing things there. But we're at a time when we were the leaders, and if we want to be, take that step further and do something really exciting, this is the time to do it. In the strategic plan, digital media is one of the things that's listed. Textbooks, when you buy them now, have CD-ROMs in the back of them. People are talking about new ways of producing textbooks and knowledge. If, when I talked about digital media, I was not thinking of doing what they're doing at Waterloo. I was thinking that what if Carlton could be the content area that produces really, really excellent CD-ROMs, programs, using the latest technology in digital media that our engineers, Rafik, have developed and are developing? If we can produce that material, and we get known across the country as the place, if you want to teach anything, you come to Carlton, because they have the program in whatever, we will then really make a niche for ourselves. It was our niche to start with. We just have to push it into the future and make it for the next generation. So it's how, and I know so many faculty members go to the teaching programs and try and improve their teaching. I am so impressed with that. There are more faculty that voluntarily go and try and improve their teaching than I've seen at other, any other institution I've worked at. So I'm really impressed with that. So what if we tried to make it using a little bit edgier media? And what if we step out there a little bit more? You see a lot of universities setting up campuses everywhere. Well, you know, what if, what if we're in an age when it's no longer real estate that counts as much as transmission of ideas through networks? What if we take over technology and try and make that be a little bit our brand? But that depends on you. And so if you're excited about it and you make it happen, then it can happen. And I know George is sitting there, and he's immediately thinking, I can, he's sat up in his chair, and he's, he's thinking of what companies he can go to get more equipment for us. So this is good. And Kim is smiling because she sees a research application. I can tell. This is good. Yes?
I was lucky this year to be able to sit on the Aboriginal Vision Committee Working Group that submitted their report last June. And I was just wondering if you would be able to elaborate on your plans for the Aboriginal Vision Committee and what you, how you see that working in the next few years for Carlton?
The Aboriginal Vision Committee submitted its report. It didn't come last June. It's, they said they were going to do it last June, and it didn't show up until this fall. So, I mean, it was going to be last June, but things, good things take time. So the committee report came sometime earlier this fall. We have read it. We've met with the committee, both the provost and I, and we have agreed to start another committee, which has another name. Do you remember the name, Peter? It was?
The Task Force.
The Task Force on Aboriginal Affairs, or something like that. We, we have a new, we, we had our, our vision committee has recommended that we set up this task force that will continue in an advisory capacity. The committee made probably 90 recommendations, and we discussed the fact that we can't do 90 recommendations all at once. We have to prioritize them and figure out what we're going to do first, and second, and third. And so that's what we're working on right now, is what will we, what will we do and how we get around doing it? Because I, I don't think we should stop with vision. We have to continue with action. And I really would like to see something exciting happen. Yeah?
I'm Kujia from Electronics. Very pleased to hear your talk, and very glad to see the recent activities going on in the university going in a very good direction. I'm very glad to see your emphasis on various research and teaching. So, so I want to expand a little bit on this side. At this moment, there is a well-defined emphasis on everything financial-related. So there is a task force on financial planning and so on, encouraging the entire university and the faculties and so on to think ways to get more revenue, creative ways to save costs, and this is very good. At the same time, I'm thinking of if, it is a complementary track where you would encourage people to think about ways to increase the competitiveness of the university, how to increase our strengths, the research, teaching, quality. This currently is very, there's not enough channels for this kind of discussions, and they are very scattered in whatever places. So if in future there is a channel, a good channel, as good as the Financial Planning Committee, so that's where we can really, really discuss the creative ways, how we can become more competitive, how our quality can improve, because in the long run, it is these things that can save everything we are facing.
Well, you know, there's one of those things that are great ideas, always somebody has thought of it already. And Mr. Watt and Dr. Ricketts are chairing a committee that's called Innovation, and it was intended to be the other side of the, of the cost-cutting and money-saving committee, what can we do new? And so maybe we have to put a little more emphasis on the, on that committee and let everybody know a little more what they're doing, because we need suggestions in that area, too. So welcome to participate and send in ideas. Okay? And we'll find, find ways for everybody to, to get that discussion out.
Hi.
Okay.
I'm also a student here, who's here because I heard about it by chance, but I appreciate you taking my question anyways. On that note, I would suggest a town hall with students, maybe to address some of the student issues. So you said that you want students to say that this is the university I want to attend. And I think that one way that you can make students proud of their university is to make them and the things that they value feel like an important part of the university. So recently, the Carlton admin has sidelined students, student clubs and organizations by making it virtually impossible to book atrium space in the university center. And being part of an organization myself, I'm finding it harder and harder to be visible. So we've really been relegated to being hidden between Starbucks and a wall, which effectively means that student issues are not being heard as much as they were, let's say, last year. So I want to know how I can be proud of Carlton when it's clear that we're lacking a space to raise issues that matter to us? And why can the military, CSIS, and corporations book space, students face easier than we can as students?
Okay. Well, first, first of all, everyone was invited to this equally. It's been on the Carlton website many times, so everyone has known about this town hall. And as I said, it's also streamed, so people can see it. Secondly, I do meet with students. I meet with the student governments. All of the vice presidents and I meet with all the representatives of all the different student government agencies every month and answer their questions. We do answer all of the students as often as possible in the, Charlotte, and their phone and when their, their email questions and so on. Yes, there was a change in booking the space, but my understanding is that it is not any more difficult for a student to book a space this year than it ever was. And in fact, it may be more efficient, because there is a full-time staff member in the room handling it, and they do have a web. If you don't think so, Mr. Kane is sitting in the same row as you are. I'm sure he's really glad that I pointed him out. I'm sure he's really glad that I pointed him out. Please talk with him afterwards and I'm sure he'll be glad to work on that with you. Okay, any other questions?
I'd just like to ask a quick question. I'm a recent graduate of Trent University, graduated on the dean's list. So I'm assuming you're one of the students that, or I'm one of the students that you're trying to attract for graduate studies next year. But I care deeply about the ethics and the integrity of the institutions which I'm applying to. So I was wondering if you could just answer a very brief question as to why you failed to condemn the bombing of the Islamic University of Gaza in January of last year?
As I have said many times, this university is an open place where everyone can feel free to discuss ideas in a respectful and concerned fashion. I do not think that it is appropriate for the university president to condemn individuals and groups publicly because then they are not part of this community. I have said that that debate can be held here on campus, that there are many people who are expert in that area, and they are welcome to debate the issue. So thank you very much for that question. Other questions? Well, if there are none, I would like to thank you all for coming. I'd like to thank all the administrators for their really hard work. I'd like to thank the faculty and the staff and students for caring about this institution. Together, we will make it an even better institution than it is. Continue asking your questions. Questions are good and they make us think and they make us try and be better every day. And we want to work together to achieve the very best institution for us all. So with that, I ask you to applaud yourselves because you're really great people.